And space landscaping request from residents. Do we have someone here?
Yeah, we've got two or three of the residents, I think.
Do we have, do we have a voice? Yeah, just give us your name and for the record, then go ahead and present that.
My name, my name is Matthew Dawson. Give you just a little bit of background. I just worked here recently, in fact, in the last week. But part of that, both my children are moving south and we were looking for free probably six months ago, something like that. Found Elbridge to be a beautiful place, so we're moving closer to our children. But ended up involved in this open space meeting with Dale and some of the residents who have interest in that. And our interest is that you, I had had some numbers from both a landscape landscaper and mountain land irrigation for both materials and labor. Is that that open space depending upon the city councils, what they can do, whether that be broken into thirds or half or whole depending on the budget. Look at this, these are numbers that were crunched very quickly within the last week and a half. I wish I could have had more time to probably look at probably through like hardware irrigation, a few other places, give you, you know, more hard task numbers, but I haven't been able to. The landscaper has broken them down and we have talked as, as a group of neighbors that we are interested to where we would be willing to help offset costs of that, to show our vested interest in that. I'm coming from the same point that that is my backyard, if you don't mind my saying so.
This is that, that area that is the catch basin by eleven two hundred.
That's what was represented in this year.
Yes, yes. And some of those, that's again rough because from what I understand, there might be a possibility of a parking lot for the upper portion of that part. But, you know, again, that's, that's the issue. And I think he's done his due diligence in pulling those, those numbers, those figures and the dimensions of that in order to give you, I think, a pretty good estimation of possibly what that would, what that would cost, what would be involved.
Did you get some kind of a specific number at this point? Do you have that ready or you have more to say for another one?
No, no, on the, on the back page, the landscaper does have some, some figures, which I think some of them.
We only got just a one sheet. That's, if you want to share that numbers, that would be fun.
So I've got that that we could print off.
This is from Ryan Tran. In fact, he has done work for the city. He did the lower portion from ours one, which is the north. His estimation for the sprinklers were about twenty-five thousand. That includes labor and, and materials. From the mountain land side, you can see, well, those numbers were approximately twelve thousand just for material. So it looks like, you know, that's a reasonable estimation. They brought in the hydro seed at seventeen. Now, the tilling of the area, we kind of talked about that, whether that four thousand dollars is really something that need to be brought in or whether the city had equipment in order to do that.
We have some. There was a dispute of timing and the availability of our staffing to do that.
Now, the spraying, I think he's taken the whole spectrum of it and some of that might also be offset by what the city might be able to do and what neighbors might be able to do. He also threw in two-inch caliper trees, thirty of those to, to disperse amongst the digerable parcel there. Like I said, I think there are a few things that could be offset, you know, with labor and possibly what the city can do. But it looked like if we take some of those things out, it's somewhere in the neighborhood fifty to fifty-five thousand. And that's for the total, that's for the total park area.
If not including the parking lot, like, or that is with?
That is.
So would be less if we put one, if we put one there?
Right.
And it would just be grass? Is that what you guys want done?
And trees.
And trees? And would we level it?
In the background, there I met last Sunday with, with eight or ten of the residents there that, that had requested some discretion on that. Did you appreciate the fact that we put up the, the no ATVs and motorcycles for that? You know, that's helped, helped. There is, they noted that there is a collection, it does collect a lot of debris there and that, not a real, you know, and it is now, now we've got homeowners on both sides of that. What I indicated to them is that we'd, we'd look at this to see if there's a possibility. My thinking, my thinking even on this is that there's probably three phases to that. What I was looking at possibly trying to work on is that the retention basin up to the trail or even just the retention basin. We do have a little money left from the trails that, that we didn't, we did that section, but we didn't use the full amount. And that, that total, that's why I was telling, first thing, I'd like to see if you get a bid for just materials. And if we put in, put in the sprinkler system ourselves and with, if neighbors and the community is willing to help install that, then, you know, that, you get a lot more mileage out of the money. That, that materials list was eleven thousand something, eleven thousand, eight, eleven thousand nine eighty-eight, so about twelve thousand. And the, my, my thing, that was, that would be landscaping that full, that full section. And we've talked about it before that, you know, that we'd like to plan, plan for it anyway. This is a good start forward in the planning. But I'd, I'd like to suggest that we look at maybe applying seventy-five hundred from this year's budget that will be up in, in the, and see if that would buy the materials for doing this. Primarily the retention basin and we'll see how far up that would go.
Brittany?
Yeah, what is the purpose of this land right here? I mean, this is quite a few acres that we're talking about putting in and grass, like, what would be the purpose of it? Because we have the park and the playground, we have the big flat field that they can play sports and stuff on. I mean, like, what would be the purpose of this? Just because we've already talked about, we have lots of parks, they're really expensive to maintain, so I just want to know before we go ahead and start like planning things, like, what's the purpose of this?
Let them, let's get from, if you want this.
Why would the city want property? It's not going to do anything with it.
Well.
It's been dedicated to the city, to developers and, to my point, it, I was there last year, it weeds up and dries up by June. Do we want weeds and dry grass in your backyard? If it's city property, that's what, I think that's where the point was going when it got dedicated to the city, by the developer, that was for those reasons.
Well, technique, the technicality is it was to be maintained as open space with natural vegetation. Well, the problem with natural vegetation is, natural vegetation might be up in the hills, but with residents coming in and weeds blowing around, that natural vegetation is, as you suggested, it becomes weeds more than something natural. We can throw out some oozes and flowers and if you're out there, you've seen a lot of flowers do come up, these.
In, in the spring, but come, come midsummer, it's definitely an ice storm. And it adds people riding their ATV. If there's grass, I doubt anybody's going to ride an ATV on it.
To clarify though, I just want to make sure you, to clarify that it was intended with the original development, that it would be open space. And we're, what we're looking at doing is trying to utilize that space in a productive way. From my perspective as the mayor and we have made, we've had a lot of discussions, that we would want to do something productive with that property, no matter what that might be, be it a park, be it a skate park, be it a pavilion or maybe two, some more park, some parking areas, because there is no place to park right now if people want to go into that area, if we were to have a large event, say we have part of our city celebration down there, there's no place for people to park.
Yeah, that's.
So there's all kinds of ideas, so there's a lot of different ideas. Let's take yours, please. And your name, give us your name first.
I'm Greg Shatton.
Thank you.
My name is Brent Wood. I've lived here almost two years and right when we moved in, we hadn't moved in fully, the city approached us to sign a granting that property over to the city because they wanted to develop a park. And that's what was told us.
Again, the technicality there is we, it either stayed yours and you had to totally take care of it.
Right.
Or it had, because of legalities, we had to have seventy-five percent of the owners sign that they would be willing to dedicate that to the city. And yes, we want to do something with it. We have talked for two or three years, even before moving in, somewhat, what do we do with that open space? Because it was obviously recognized, it is a weed patch, weed patch. It is not what was envisioned with natural vegetation in the initial phases.
Well, I would assume that the city had a plan at that time when they approached the homeowners.
We didn't. And, and, well, one of the problems with a plan is the dollars that have to fund it. And if we have a plan, we can, in overtime, allocate dollars so that we can implement plan. And I appreciate the fact that you're coming forward with some of these, this is, this is the first significant, specific thing that's been brought forward by residents, although it's been thrown out there several times. What would you like to see? We've had a few people come forward and say, yeah, I would like a couple of different things. But I appreciate the fact that you're coming forward with specific plans.
Most, most of the parks have, have a tendency, and it's not just, it's not just Elbridge, it's not just this area, have a tendency to become part of a city recreation issue. So they end up becoming, you know, ball fields, they end up becoming, you know, soccer fields, all of those kind of things. I, I don't know that you have and, and I wasn't here at the time. I mean, like I said, I'm, I'm new.
Our, our current city recreation is joined with Salem at this point because of populations. And, but that doesn't mean that we don't want to go and, and utilize our own peoples to have our own recreation going on in some form or fashion that makes sense. And that's why we have gone initially with Salem recently.
And the idea of parks and, and I, I have no, as a, as a new resident, I like natural state, but, you know, that's also, that's also a personal perception of, of what that means, what that means.
Absolutely.
Weed patch versus wildflowers.
I don't think anybody expected that to be weeds as it has turned out.
And so the issue of those, those paths that are through there, there had to be initially some sort of idea of what those walking paths were, were supposed to be in and around. I, I do come from, you come from the area where.
I would like to say yes, but I don't think that's true.
So what has been your guys' outlook? When we got approached, we, we got asked by Dale, well, we, we would like some sort of grass, just a nicer, a nicer area than what is, what, what was, what's your guys' idea of?
Well, I have a couple of questions. So right now it's the retention thing, right? The water goes into it?
There is part of it.
It's like the hundred year, hundred year storm.
So would that?
Every cell of me doesn't get used.
But are we going to leave that there?
It has to.
We have to.
It has to.
So would you fill in? Because it's like pretty, I mean.
It's huge.
Yeah, so would we have to fill it in?
No, it's designed, that's the size it has to be. It has to stay that way for a hundred year storm to hold the water.
In terms of its physical structure.
It has to stay how it is.
It has to stay. Now, in terms of what we do, we can, we can put rock in there, we could put grass in there, we could do a combination, we could, we could literally put in a skate park that as long as it doesn't take away from the ability to detain, detain water in extended flood periods.
Would that make it hard to mow? Like, I, I mean, I'm just, I'm asking, I think something needs to be done. I'm just trying to think through, you know what I'm saying? Like, because I live right above it too, so. But I'm thinking, are we even going to mow that?
So.
How realistic is that?
Last year, what we, what we did last year was we, we put the brush mower on the tractor and we mowed the wildflowers and the weeds, which I, I agree is primarily weeds. We did that twice through the summer, once in the spring, once towards the end. I know they get out of control. But as far as like that retention pond, we're very limited on what we could do with lawnmowers and tractors as it is right now.
We'd have to reshape.
We're going to have to reshape it, level things out to where.
Oh, so it would be so steep?
The angles are too steep to even, I mean, we can go down, up and down it. I think we can do it. There are some times where we will have issues getting it up to mow the, the one side where it's so steep.
Yeah.
You know, if it's raining or if grass is wet, sprinklers are ran, anything like that, we, it will be.
During the last bad storm that I remember, and that was the last, I believe it was.
It was like two years ago.
Maybe it was two years ago, we really had some flooding that come off.
Yeah.
And nothing showed up in the detention basin, virtually nothing.
Good thing we have it.
Well, I mean, yeah, most of the water was retained in the various areas, but it did go through, there is a storm drain system and it doesn't empty into that. But virtually nothing has come into there. That doesn't mean it couldn't happen, but the probability of it happening is not high. So what I think needs to happen is, I mean, right now fifty to fifty-five thousand, if we could cut that in half and take, you say half, but comes in the volunteer labor, that's just the initial outlay. Now we have to deal with the hours that have to be allocated for maintenance and that is significant. We have, we bought us this new lawnmower a little while ago and we thought, boy, cats me out. No, it just takes forever even with that to mow what we currently have. And to buy another mower that would be capable to really handle something of that scope would be probably another close to forty thousand dollars or more. Now, that's a thing we can't look at it. I think we should look at it. I think you're coming forward as a very positive thing to do. Maybe we need to look at whatever options can we throw into that? If the detention basin is too difficult to maintain by mowing, let's look at another option of some sort that we could still utilize it for public use. And, and maybe we could even, we could even put a pavilion down in there, perhaps with some, a lot of trees. Maybe even a bunch of zerriscaping things on the edges where we can't mow, I don't know. I'm just brainstorming with you. And yes, we'd like to see something happen. I'd like to see a nice big pavilion down there. We have a lot of people into that area and we're relatively close to that area. We have one little pavilion here. That's it. All of this costs a lot of dollars. And we're so restricted in the amount of income that comes into the city because of property tax as our basic source for those options.
I'm just going to ask a dumb question. Could we just put concrete on it and make it a skate park? Or do you have to have like that engineer?
It's got to be engineer.
We can't just?
No.
What about like a sand volleyball pit? And you like just walks around it and then like put sand down there with like, or something like that? Would that be cheaper?
Well, that.
Too big?
That's, that's one area. We're talking five acres, so it's only long.
Yeah, it's, it's huge.
So I mean, one area, that'd be a big volleyball court.
Well, I mean.
I mean, in the bottom, yeah, we could do, we're up for, I think everybody here, we would like to see something down there. It's not an ATV track, it's not.
Absolutely.
An ice storm when you look out the backyard, we have something.
Well, and we, and I think, I, I can speak for the group, we are, I mean, involved in the city enough that we want to see what the city would like to have. If, if we start talking about skate parks, are we really talking about what the total city can use? Are we talking about pavilions, which more than likely?
There is enough space down there that we could utilize all of that open space for multiple uses, multiple demographics. There's a lot of options. We just, we just have to be careful to say, here's what we want, let's jump on it without looking at the other unintended consequences that come from that. That doesn't mean that, that they're not important, but we need to get a bigger scope of time. A plan. Let's, let's figure out how we can, I mean, a committee to help us determine some of those things in conjunction with, with our city recorder who has to take care of the financing of all of this, figuring out how we're going to pay for this, when can we pay for it? That has to come back to this body then to decide, are we willing to dedicate that much money and where does that money even come from? So there's, there's an awful lot to this. You're going to, I go ahead?
Yeah, I just want to mention that it looks like it's around a quarter million square feet, so that's a lot of water.
There are approximately three point two acres below the trail and they're about two and, two and a quarter acres above the trail.
Yeah.
If you take out for the parking lot.
Yeah, it would look like we're up to.
Oh, okay.
So we got to explore in this process of figuring this out and the sustainability of it, look for creative ways to use it where we don't have to water the entire space because we just can't afford the water.
I mean, you guys ended paying the water though, so you know what I mean.
We haven't been metering what we've been using out here, we just barely put a meter in so we can find out how much the city really been using.
We do meter the lower one park.
Yeah.
It's mainly how much water they require, so we're trying to be very judicious in that regard as well as we look at the use of our, of our, of our land, right? Because water is becoming a very, an issue for us as far as how we pay for it and, and maintain the whole, that just part of the maintenance, so we just need to look for those creative ways of, of, of using that land.
My, my recommendation real quickly is that we maybe form a committee of volunteers that would be willing to research, drive around county, around the state, find some similar geographical areas and say, here's what we see in other places that could work, that would help us, that we could implement here and then bring that back. Then we start applying all of the calculations to it and, and see what could possibly happen. It sounds like we've got the nucleus of a committee, I don't know if that's true or not.
You have a president right there.
And realistically, we would really want, you'd have to be involved with our planning commission. This is our planning commission chair, Stacy Peterson. And again, you, all of this has to come before the council ultimately to make these kinds of decisions, but I'm excited to see your enthusiasm and involvement and ideas for it. So, on that basis, we can't, it's not an action item, but is, is there a volunteer? And then, I mean, I don't know who on the council would be willing to work with you.
I think we could cross a little time there. Actually, Matt has got a lot.
We're saying no to all grass, is that right?
I, I don't think we're saying yes. We're not saying yes or no.
Okay. I'm just trying to clarify what, like, do you want them to come back with something that might be a little more cost effective in the long run?
I think we have to.
Okay.
We have to. One-time costs might be exorbitant, maintenance costs get way exorbitant. And so if we can minimize long-term maintenance, we're saving money even though initial outlay might be kind of high. And that's what we, we have to look at a little bit.
And that was my question originally was asking like, what's the purpose of this? We put in five acres of grass, what's it going to be used for? You know what I mean? We have the other big park right next door to it, we have the park right below it. What are we going to, you know, is this going to be used any different than acres right around it that are already there?
Yeah.
That is all grass?
Well, and that, that's to my point with the recreation use. I don't know the, the vision of, of what the city is looking for recreation that we have. In my opinion, these parks just end up getting taken out by recreation and then there's no place for families to go and enjoy themselves because there are recreation activities going on, you know, lights and everything. And, and it's nice for a family to be able to go and have a picnic or have an open space where there is. And I, again, like I said, I just came here. If I would have known a little bit more, I, I could have done some, some work as far as what we would do with rockscaping, which we wouldn't include any water. But this is the maximum amount, I guess that's where we're going, is, is this is the maximum amount of saying, okay, we just do this and everybody looks at it as a simple fix, grass it, water it, mow it. As opposed to maybe there is rockscaping, there, maybe there are some things that make it easier for maintain, maintenance as far as mowing and that kind of thing, the wildflowers. I, I'm not against that, but I really do see, and I have seen in the community, I've lived in a spring about thirty years, I watched all of those parks be used for recreation use and there's no place to go for your children, you know, to enjoy, you know, the, the, there.
They don't.
Just an, an effort there and, and just in one week, you know, from November, you know, Matt has gotten a bid, gotten a plan for the whole, the whole thing. They discussed, you know, that being, that being a soccer, a, a natural, a natural dome for soccer, you know, you're not losing it anywhere because you've got the, the berm around it. Maybe it is just a recreation place, maybe a sand volleyball court, those are relatively affordable. And maybe a lot of, a lot of trees and picnic tables and it's just a, a picnic area, those kind of things could be done. All of those however will require part of what he's, what he's done the labor on, some water. You know, the, the wildflowers would probably work in a, in an area if they had water. You know, and they, and so.
Could put in an amphitheater.
I think it is good to.
Could be a ideal place for an amphitheater.
Get the specific ideas, you know, yeah, maybe an amphitheater that would fit in there. It is a big area.
So would you be willing to tear a committee?
Yes.
Would you, I'd work with Dale and also Stacy and come up with a, a committee of five in addition to these others, but let it be your committee, not the city council, and let them be resourced for you as opposed to, you know, making the decisions necessarily for you. And over the next period of time, let us know, we'll put you back on our agenda here and let's see what we can come up with. In this group, was there anybody that's living in the Salisbury homes that was, was part of this or was everybody still just from Elbridge Meadows?
Both of us.
Both of you are in the Salisbury homes? Very good to hear that. So that we're not seg, segmenting our, our neighborhoods, I don't want that. Good to hear that, thank you. Okay? If, if you want maybe just to get your contact information and those kinds of things, get that to, to Dale at some point and then he can give it to our.
So this is a starting point, at least to, if you have something.
Okay. I appreciate your time tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Police fire impact fee, see the attachment. Nelson, I'm kind of getting this up a little bit.
You bet. I just locate.
Fill it from Lindon. Yeah. So last week I was reading the paper and I came across an article where Lindon City had adopted a fire and police impact fee to help cover the costs of additional fire resources and law enforcement that come about as a direct result of, of growth. You know, we're, we're a growing city, we've had this discussion over and over and over about how are we going to, how are we going to meet the needs of a growing city effectively? And in the past, when I brought this up, and this is something I've brought up, I mean, we're, we're talking like even as far back as eight years ago. Because at that point in time, we were still trying to figure out how we were going to pay for the fire station expansion. We didn't want to take all of our savings and use it, which we ended up doing. And for whatever reason, various resistance was met there saying it was difficult, it's hard to do, you don't do these types of things. And so when I read that they had implemented this, I reached out to Lindon City and talked with, I can't remember her name now, but I talked with their recorder about this and that's why I got a copy of their ordinance that they put in place for this. Because I thought maybe this would be a good starting point if this is something.
point, if this is something we're interested in pursuing further, um, we're not gonna go out and have to invent the wheel on our own. We can take and utilize what they have established and what has been modified as maybe the basic building blocks if we decided to use this for fire protection. I don't know that we can do it for police unless we plan on having our own force, so that part we kind of separate out. They have, in, in the, uh, in here, they have different figures for, uh, whether you're residential or commercial or an industrial type user, um, and I would, I would say that if this is something we're interested in looking at, we need to figure out what those costs are, because clearly the larger structures, churches, schools, those types of things, when they come in and they're built, they put more of a burden on us as a city than the individual residences do, um, because of the requirements for fire protection and so forth. I would like to just see if it's something that the rest of the council would be interested in pursuing, um, if not, you know, I'm, I'm a big boy, I, I won't be offended if you say no, um, but I, I think that we ought to have the discussion.
It's something that was brought up, what, nine or ten months ago, we, a year or so, approximately, that we thought we gotta address this issue with the, the Iowa, the rate, Iowa?
ISO.
ISO, or, have to write alphabet. Uh, that rating, to make sure that we're properly being covered and, and helping the residents in that regard. So I think, personally, yes, I think it's something that needs to be certainly researched, and I, I haven't looked at it to be frank, I, I should have, but I haven't gone through it, there's a lot there.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot, a lot of it has to do with the study, the portion of it, the actual code's just a couple pages.
It's like thirteen.
Yeah, just a few pages.
And, or that would be police.
Yeah, and so you, you would take, we could piece that out, but I, you know, I, one of the things that I, I feel like, at least the challenge that I accepted, and I think most of us here have accepted, is the fact that we gotta think outside the box here. I mean, we gotta get creative, we gotta find ways, innovative ways to deal with the issues that we're experiencing within our own city, and, you know, doggone it, if this is another way, I, you know, I don't expect it to be the silver bullet that's gonna solve all of our fire department budget woes, per se, but if it can help, even just a little bit, I mean, you know, the, let's see here.
Well, I was gonna say that engine, we talked about getting even a very used engine's quarter of a million dollars.
Probably, yeah.
So...
And maybe this wouldn't take care of that portion of, it may not buy the engine, but maybe it'll buy the SCBA tanks and the equipment related to that, that has to go with the engine, when we get the engine, and, and be able to meet those needs. Residential, you know, their fire impact fee, and obviously ours should be different, because it's based on what we're trying to accomplish and where we're at and what we've invested so far in our percentages.
Populations.
Populations and so forth. I mean, a hundred and fifty-two dollars a household, I mean, it don't seem like much, but a hundred and fifty-two, and we had, so we had a hundred houses.
We have seven hundred houses.
Yeah, but if we had a hundred new houses built, I mean, that's...
So are you proposing we add more to the impact fee, make a separate one, or...
Yes, this is, this is...
How, in relation to impact fees, are ours higher or lower than this?
That was one of the art, one of the points of their article, and relatively, I mean, if you take a look at the, the big picture, that's not gonna be enough to rock the card. Now, I will tell you, what would rock the card is if we went in and we raised our water impact fees a thousand dollars, or our sewer impact fees, another thousand dollar, I mean, it's those types, this, this isn't gonna be a big figure, I mean, this is, this is miniscule in, in comparison, because what, what it's gonna come down to, every one of us in this city, either existing or new residents, we're all gonna pay for this one way or the other.
Yeah.
If we don't, we're gonna pay even more than if we do. I mean, this, this is one of those few things, frankly, where I feel like you can take a look at what the actual cost is and say, okay, yeah, I can spend this much, so I don't have to spend a whole bunch more down the road with higher insurance rates, whereas some of these others, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, I don't know when that water line's gonna break, I don't know when these other things are gonna happen, and so, or when we're gonna get to a point where we've got to have this other collector road put through, you know, there, there are those types of things where I don't know that we can directly attribute it, so. I'm just looking for a way to, to solve, to sting out of this a little bit.
No, I, I agree, we can't use impact fees at all to pay for this, I thought you said maybe we could if we changed.
You have to have the right amp, an impact fee is attached to its designation, water impact fee, impacts water.
Sure. But it can be used for...
Only for that thing.
And that's why it brings itself.
We don't have a fire impact fee now, so if we did have it, it could only be spent for fire-related.
And most cities have, I mean, I'm just asking.
Not, not most, right now, right now, it's probably about a third.
Most cities, most cities literally, again, it comes back to source of income, ours is property tax, impact fees. Uh, other cities, Lyndon, as small as it is, they still have a fairly decent economic development, impact, well, not impact fee, but fee structure that allows them to collect type only.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, seeing logical and reasonable to me that there, that new growth does have an impact in the fire department. So from that perspective, I favor this idea, I think it's a good thing that we should, that we should look at closely. To what degree, I, you know, we just have to, we just have to be able to base it on what impact it really does have. So for me, that's what it's about, is to offset the impact, and that's, that's all it is.
And legally, legally, technically, that's all an impact fee is supposed to do.
That's all it is.
Okay, I just don't want it to be where now we're not, we're not spending budget money on fixing our own fire department, we're relying on that?
No.
And so we can have more money for pet projects, or, do you know what I mean? Like, I think, just to be fair.
Right, for example, I'm not saying, let's say we collect ten thousand in impact fees for the fire department.
Okay.
I'm not saying we're gonna now take ten thousand out of the fire department's budget to go spend on parks, I'm saying we're gonna keep what's already there and we're gonna add to it, so that we can help.
And this will be an addition.
So we don't have to raise our taxes or other things to help generate...
And what amount, you're, you're not proposing any?
Well, I, I, I can't propose an amount, because first off, you have to do an impact fee study, and I was not a math major.
I just don't agree so much, too, that it becomes not affordable to bill.
Yeah, one of the, one of the questions that I've heard... Is it we pass on, raise, is if we have to do an impact fee study?
What's it gonna cost to do the study?
The study, would it be the cost of...
That's why I wanted to see, kind of, poll the council, see what your feelings were, and then we take this back and we go to OAKland and say, okay, put a price tag on this, what's it gonna cost us to have a study done? Because I don't want it to be a case of stepping over dollars to save a few dollars.
Water impact fee study cost us in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
That was huge. Uh, I don't know that this would be, have the same parameters, but, but I don't know.
Yeah, so what, what I'm looking for basically is authorization for us to contact OAKland and make sure, to, to just get an estimate on what's gonna run before we even approve.
What would their cost?
What would their cost be to, to figure that out, and then from there we can have the discussion when we want to.
I don't think we, as long...
I just, I just wanna make sure that before we spend any time on it, that they're okay with it, and if you are, then we can go that route.
It would, it would cost us a little bit even just to ask that question, it'd take a little bit, but not much, I would just suggest that if the council's on board with going that far, that we just administratively do that.
Yeah, that's, that's where I'm at.
I don't see a problem with that personally, Royce, any problem with doing that?
No.
I think so, yeah. Okay, let's go to the next one, thank you. Mount Nevo Water Meeting.
Jump me to...
Yeah, you were here, and... But I definitely wanna pull in, have you been in a little meeting yet?
I have once.
And you've been there, I've been there, Royce, you've been involved, let's make sure we...
I was at the same one before the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, so our last meeting with Mount Nevo Water Agency, they came and talked to us, you know, they'd originally talked to us about their two-phase study and the scope of work that they would do during those two phases, and the cost to us to be a part, which they had us fifteen thousand dollars to be paid over two years. Um, during that meeting, we did negotiate a little bit and get it down to five thousand dollars.
That's what I was gonna say, that's what I'd seen was by...
Yeah, that's what he sent us to follow up, um, it'd be five thousand dollars over two years to participate. I told him we were meeting tonight and we probably wanna negotiate further on that, but I, he just said, you know, what do you think the overall council, their fill is? And I just told him, I said, well, we might have to negotiate that a little further, we'll see, I told him, we really, we do wanna participate, we wanna be a part, we wanna be a part of the community and make sure that we all have enough water to share with each other, but based upon our recent water studies that we had just done and our biggest capital facilities plan and the amount of money we just paid for that, I said, we'd be in a different position if we hadn't just done those things within the last two years, but because we have, we've just had this huge outlay of money, so to us, especially as a city, I said, we don't get any, you know, tax besides property tax, so everything we do, it's coming from our residence pocket, so to just, you know, to be like fifteen thousand dollars, that's a lot of money. Um, so they just wanna know kind of our fill on if we wanna be a part, their current offer to us is five thousand dollars over two years, so it'd be twenty-five hundred dollars a year, and then their second thing is, um, they have a technical committee, um, and they offered to have us put somebody on their technical committee.
One of the...
And I said, we may want to do that.
One of the concerns.
To leave the door open, because we would have a little more say that way if we're in, I mean, we still have our, our same voting, but if we want somebody on the technical side, that...
Right, right now, that five thousand dollars only allows us to help pay for a study, it does not put us in as active voting members.
Oh.
There are then ongoing annual fees, because they have administration, they have an attorney, I mean, all of these things are still in place, I've been to three or four or five of these meetings, and so the five thousand is just to pay for the second part of this study, which is a huge cost, I've seen, the, the cost that was going to be tremendously high. Um, my, my question before we go any farther is, what is the value to the city really for us being involved in Mount Nevo Water Agency? We are currently continuing to pay into SUNW, and that, in all probability, is gonna be a dead animal down the road here sooner than later, leaving us having paid in a lot of money with the thing that we've been able to get back, which is worthwhile to the city as a fact that we have been allocated X number of, of shares of water that we can purchase at a nominal, relatively nominal fee, and there is water out there cheaper, for sure, but we know that this water is available and readily transferable into the city, which is a complication sometimes. Um, we can do that whether we're in Mount Nevo Water Agency or not, and, and what is it, we're going to gain from it, your perspective?
Um, I find it difficult to find the, the benefit, I guess, you'd say, um, talking with them, and I, I wouldn't have been to one meeting with Brittany and Royce, but, um, you know, the question that I asked was, what's the main benefit? What's our one thing gonna be? And it was this study, which we've already done, our, you know, we've already paid that out of pocket, and two, being associated with the other cities surrounding cities, knowing what they're doing, and I'm just not sure how that affects what we're gonna be doing.
And they are open meetings.
You know, and so...
Oh, they are, so we can attend, you can work here.
Regardless of...
Who do we pay for something?
I mean, if, if they go to, there's certain meetings that they can in fact close, but for the, for no, certain types of negotiations, but for the most part, they're open meetings, but we would not have a vote, and we don't have a vote, do they have enough impact that they could vote us out of certain kinds of settings and circumstances? Yeah, I, I'm having a hard time deciding personally that there's, maybe there is a great advantage, and there is an advantage, and I hate to use the term politically, but it is politically an advantage, because you have interaction with all of these other institutions, agencies, municipalities, what have you, uh, the High Line Canal, the, um, the reserve, I can't remember, who else, the churches portion of this, uh, that's going on clear out in, in Goshen, they're part of this group, Spanish for Pace and Salem is part of this group, there's, there's multiple entities involved, and they, they work with even this, uh, I don't know if they have a, a member from the CUP or not, I don't think they do, but, so you get that interaction, which is, is valuable, it has a value, but is it what we really need to do? The five thousand, again, we're just paying for a study, then there will be ongoing annual fees, what will those be? They'll be minimal, but they will be there.
Is, okay, this is gonna sound dumb, but...
That's okay.
Is Mount Nevo just like, they just started their own thing and they decided, we're gonna be, we self-appointed ourselves in charge? I mean, is that like what it is?
Yes, it is.
So would they really have power if...
Yes.
Yeah, 'cause they're gonna, they're making SUNW go away, this is basically...
SUNW's not gonna go away, that means...
Well, it won't go away.
Sewer land.
Yeah, because the land's...
It's gonna keep you seeing.
But, but SUNW was created to do what this is all, what they're trying, this is a complete replication, duplication of what SUNW...
Well, is it really? Because SUNW has water rights, they have, and you don't...
But, no, but the studies and everything, they've, they've done studies, they, all these things, we've been paying into all these years, this is... I'll have this conversation off-camera some other time, I'll leave it at that.
Well, because...
Sorry, sorry.
No, no, because, because there are, there are things that are going on here and they've involved certain players specifically for the purpose of taking over those other players.
Well, is that why they're doing this? 'Cause they don't have the power in SUNW, so now it's...
They, they can't, because they're not part of SUNW.
I'm just trying to figure out what's going on with...
SUNW, the, the controlling entities of SUNW are the mayors of almost every city, city in South Utah Valley.
Okay.
I'm one of them.
Okay, so...
But what does that really mean?
Well, you speak for the, for the city?
Actually, we, we have a representative go there, but there's still a governing board, but if we were to, we decided to sell that sewer land prob, property, I would have a vote to say, yes, we want to or not.
That's correct.
But this, if we pay in, is just for information, we're not buying anything.
We're not buying rights for water, that I'm aware of.
No, for this, no.
No, we're not, no.
This is just study.
It is a study to help evaluate how much water is out there relative to the growth that's coming in, do we have enough water to service it, and if so, who gets it, where is it going to be applied, um, so that it becomes quote equitable?
Mm-hmm.
When you talk populations, we don't have much equity in this whole thing. Mike, that's my concern.
What'd you think, Brittany, when you sat there?
Okay, so, well, okay, so, one of the things, I think, you know, if we're gonna take part, we need to be a voting member, so we have some say...
And we would be.
I think we also need to put somebody on the technical committee, because the benefit we're gonna get from it is politically, and know what's going on and having votes, because the study itself isn't gonna do our city a whole lot of good because of the amount of money that we've already spent on our facilities plan and our water and studies.
And our physical population and size.
Yes, so, and so knowing what the other cities are gonna do, I mean, they're public meetings and they're open, if we have a vote and we have a say, so I, I think we either need to be all in and we have somebody on the technical committee and we have a voting right, and we really get in and be, be involved, or not. One concern that I have is, is one of their main players works for an engineering company, and I asked him, so is your company going to do this study? And they all kind of got quiet and said, well, it's not for sure yet, but, so that's my concern, if you're gonna have all these cities and we're gonna pay two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars, it needs to be bid out, it need, you know what I mean?
They, technically, because of their structure, they have to bid it out, so that's why it's not sure yet, but depending on their bylaws as to how they structured, who, who can receive the bid, I don't know.
Anyway, so that, that's one of my concerns, is one of their main players is engineering.
So if, if we don't participate, seems like there's two things in my mind, maybe I'll be identified more, that we would be foregoing. One, we would not be able to, we would have a vote, of course, meaning that we currently, with, with the charter, I understand, we would not be able to approve expenditures of any funds or anything like that to do any additional studies, right? Right? I think the study that they're doing now is number two, right? Are they in process?
Well, they want to approve number two.
They want to approve number two.
This is for number two, this five thousand.
So you'd be able to say yea or nay on that going forward, right?
You could say it, but...
But you're, you're, you're just one of many and more than likely, they're gonna go forward.
They probably, well, they will.
So the other piece is, is the report that's generated. Do we, we would be giving access, potentially access to that information? Do we feel that there's information that would be generated from this new study that would benefit us?
So does this study have to be public?
It's a public entity. It's, it's a sub...
Agency. I mean, could we get it anyways?
Well, it might be public, but it, you know, I was sitting here thinking, if it's public, is it still give you a right to use the?
The data.
The data. You didn't help fund it.
Because it, it is still structured under the laws, it, I'm trying to think of the right term. But they are a sub-entity of the state of Utah by corporation. In other words, it is a public entity that, that this group is. It has restricted memberships. We get that, but it, because it is still...
Public funds.
So you could do an official grandma request?
Then we're not really losing anything.
I don't think we're losing.
What are we losing?
I say, I say we wait, and if SUNWAC goes, then let's look into it.
Or if they can give us a valid reason that it becomes a benefit to our city.
I mean, five thousand dollars is a lot of money to spend to just, you know what I mean? A study when we've already done our own, that we've spent so much money.
And we have given them access to our information to assist in that study. We've already donated, if you will.
A donation in kind.
Like, in donation in kind that we paid for.
And that's what I told them when I said, I don't think the five thousand will fly. As I said, there's gonna be a further negotiation. I just don't think it'll go... But, so they, um, sorry, Nelson, go ahead.
I, I was gonna say, my, my request to you, I, I, I don't think we should take action on this, but I think you need to talk to Mike McKell about all of this and get the context of this from him. And I'll leave it at that.
Let's move on.
Fifty bucks for it.
It isn't even the money.
Thousand dollars a year maintenance, I'll be careful.
Yeah, it isn't the money, it's as much as it is the function and purpose it's starting to play and benefit.
And they're, just, you know, when we asked them, you know, McKay asked them like, hey, what would we get from this? They're like, well, you'd be a good neighbor. Yeah, I mean, that was kinda their thing, and, and they also said, what do you want? What do you want from this? Tell us what you want and we can include it as part of the study. What do you need for your city to participate? So that's the other thing they threw out at me. Like, what do we need included in the study that we'd be willing to pay and participate? So if...
Crystal ball, okay.
So if there is something, just that's on everybody's, can think about that, if there is something that we'd want them to include.
He told me not to let him do this, but I will.
And I'm not talking about this at all, just so you know. I'm just talking about what you gave me an assignment for on Friday. You were talking water. I, I know Shay's not here, but we did draw that out. What we're talking about is, speaking of water, with the well going in, the well that's possibly going in?
The test well, number eleven-two-hundred?
Mm-hmm. They're wanting to figure out a way to not tear up a roundabout later and so...
We're gonna come with that too.
Do you have that in yet?
Yes.
I didn't see it on there.
Definitely be here.
Okay, great.
It's, it's under...
Get past the water.
Yeah, we won't, we won't slip past that. That has to happen tonight.
Yeah, however it does.
It does. Okay, next, survey results.
I know.
Time out.
Hey, all right. I still got thirty seconds, so we're good.
For now.
But I'll leave it in a quarter minutes out.
Okay.
I thought you were gonna get a sandwich or something.
Survey results.
Give us a quick overview, if you would, please.
So we, for those that are here, we, we, I'm sure you all know that we created a, a survey, sent it out. It was open for about a month. We received back two-hundred-and-sixty-one fully completed surveys and a hundred-and-twenty-eight partial.
That's cool.
And that's actually pretty good. If you talk to statistic, those who do statistical analysis on surveys, they, they, they really want you to get more than forty, but they said...
Forty percent.
Forty people to take a survey. But if you get up into the, into the three, four-hundred range, they just start to duplicate and it doesn't become any more statistically, you know, accurate. So we're, we're well within that. That's a great, I was really pleased to see that. I have not created a summary, an executive summary on that. Nothing? Well, I got lots of graphs, but you don't wanna go through like forty pages of graphs. If you have a particular area in which you would like to investigate, I'd be happy to tell you that. Otherwise, I really needed to put this together in an executive summary to pull out some of the more, say, information.
As you went through, what did you see was a telling result of some of your questioning? In summary?
There were, there were a few surprises in here. Just so you know that about twenty percent of our residents are actually thinking about moving out of Elkridge. That doesn't mean they will. That means that they do, that some of them, forty-one percent of those said that they're starting to look at homes elsewhere. So it gives you kind of an idea of, of kind of that. One point six percent of them have already accepted an offer. So we have that.
Did they submit reasons?
They did. They vary greatly across the board. So the other category is, is like fifty-five percent. The next category down that they listed was neighbor problems. At about thirty percent. I didn't look in here to see if your name was actually specified. And then the next, just a little bit lower than that, is the cost of living is too high. So that, that's interesting.
What about the commercial?
If you...
Is that what... Our sliding scales of reduced services, raised taxes?
Yeah, that.
But commercial?
Before I get there, the most common age group that the citizens are, are concerned about, number one is youth aged eleven through seventeen, and number two is children aged four through ten. So, you know, and it turns out, if you look above, that we have a large... There's a leaning towards younger families in our, in our city now. So this is no surprise if you look at, if you base it off of that, right? And again, I'll put this together in a better, in a better format so that we can derive more of the information out of there.
Things they would like to see?
If you, if you look at things like, if you have recreational facilities or what would be most important to them, way, way positive splash pad, that's, that's, that's received a very high score.
That's what was supposed to go on that spot down there.
In fact, there's almost no negative, no downside to that. Not very many people want a paintball field, so I guess that's out for...
What about rifle range?
Indoor shooting range, that wasn't neutral. So anyway, that was interesting.
Nelson then on indoor shooting range.
There's one more in pacing on Nathan himself on the side.
Swimming pool rated second, by the way.
Well, there's already one, I think. It's not human. Yeah, there's a couple.
More than half said it was either wise or very wise for us to depend, to depend on volunteer work.
Now, are they gonna show up?
Uh, they said that, they said that most of them would do two to four hours.
Per year?
By the way, we have their email address, if you care.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's important, really. If you're gonna get a commitment, know where that commitment's coming from.
So other than the, let's talk about traffic a little bit, or major issues resulting from our growth. Factoring out the other write-ins, which are about, it's like there's seventy-one of them, traffic is the number one concern that people have. And the next one is increased living expenses and then increased drug crime and losing my view kinda type for the third slot.
I mean, isn't that nice to live in a city where the number one thing is traffic? No, I'm serious. Like, that's not a real issue. We don't even really have that much of a traffic. That's what I'm saying.
Depends where you live.
I got more detail, so I'll give you here in just a minute of that, 'cause I drilled into that.
May I make a statement? Is it okay? I couldn't finish it. I, I started, I get interrupted, I'd come back and it wouldn't let me finish it. I did that multiple times to get two or three incomplete...
You should've called me. I'd have helped you out.
Well, I didn't know until recently who it was to call.
Okay. Multi-family dwellings, very negative. Congos especially, huge negative. Twin homes or same apartments are even more so. That's the most negative type. Assisted living actually has a positive flavor to it, which is somewhat, I think, of a shift, maybe because we have one now and realize that it's not, it's not the end of the, it's not the end of the city. For that, so we, so that was encouraging.
So what was the least negative out of those options?
The what?
The least negative out of those options.
The least negative?
Yeah.
Or assisted living?
Well, besides assisted living? Between our townhomes and apartments?
Twin homes.
Twin homes.
Isn't that what the, is gonna be the?
Parkside? The senior living?
Yes.
But I think that'll still look nice.
And I suspect if you did the survey after we put those in, that you'll see a favorable change here. All right? I think if it's done well, it's, it's, it's great. Eighties, forty-five percent of people said they'd like to stay in the townhouse. Okay, traffic, speeding is the number one issue. With traffic, flow efficiency is second, and they're almost darn near tied.
I was trying to say, dang it. I know.
You got Trish and you got Nelson.
My left foot.
When it comes to increase of living expenses, their main primarily is water rates. Down a little bit is property taxes. Even after our horrible increase of sewer rates, they, that was a distant, distant concern. People are most concerned about decreased personal privacy as we grow, as they alter lifestyle. As far as environmental impact, it looks like a loss of hillside and open spaces is ranks even higher than the depletion of our water supply. With a pretty, pretty healthy swing on that. Seventy percent of the people have no idea we have a general plan.
But forty-five percent have read it.
I was about to say that.
Seventy percent of the people...
That's why I called you.
That didn't, that didn't read it.
Oh.
They didn't know we had one.
Didn't know we had one.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to reconcile, those two things do overlap.
I was afraid most of those people had moved. We don't do that very good.
So how likely are they to read it? About half, about, about almost two-thirds.
So they are?
That they will read it.
Until they pull it up and see how long it is.
Well, then they'll fit into the category that says, I started but didn't finish. And that was ten percent of the people that have, that have read it, or have not read it, I'm sorry. How well do people align with the general plan, if they have read that general plan? Sixty-five percent of them do not align. And they, seventy-six percent said that the city managed, that the city is not managed according to the general plan. How, question is, how well has the city managed growth as compared to the general city plan? General plan? Seventy-six percent said not.
Not those who have read it.
That were not following the general plan.
Well, that goes back to how the general plan is written. Possibly, understanding what, what it really is versus possibly perception versus reality.
So do you disagree or agree or disagree that the city should actively pursue development of commercial property for the purpose of collecting sales and use tax? And agreed and strongly agree, it's gonna be about forty-two percent of the people with ten percent neutral. So you're almost, just a little over, just about half and half between strongly, you know, to agree and disagree.
How about the strongly disagree?
Strongly disagree is twenty-five percent.
And, and agree, disagree together?
Forty-five.
So that's higher than agreed.
Yeah.
Well, neutral's kind of a...
It's pretty close. It's pretty close, if you look at it. Should we pursue commercial property for other than collecting sales tax? And we had about, was that thirty, forty, about fifty percent were strongly or strongly disagree or disagree.
So if we need a...
And you only get thirty percent agree, so...
So if we need it for sales taxes, half and half, and if it's not for sales tax purpose, then...
It's about two-thirds, one-third.
Yeah.
What's the point in pursuing it if we're not gonna generate some...
Well, it's closer to doctor's offices or professional buildings or things like that.
Yeah, but you don't generate...
Well, I mean, I'm a cherry head, but you weren't...
Yeah, but then we're making that. Well, so, yeah.
Should we actively pursue the annexation of additional commercial property? Forty-six percent was agreed and twenty-nine percent strongly agreed. So that's thirty...
About seventy.
Seventy-six, seventy-five percent of the people said yes.
Wow.
And only...
Take that worse.
Strongly disagree and disagree were about four percent. So there's a pile of neutrals. So the question is, how close would you like to live to a gas station?
Yeah, I'm interested. Seventy-five percent said annexed property for commercial, but this is what I...
But you gotta keep that gas station at least half a mile to a mile away. Same thing with convenience store.
That's about the length of the city.
Right, exactly. So that's basically put it down.
I'm okay with it in my backyard.
The only one that they said that would be less than a tenth of a mile would be a recreation center. That was a group of twenty-three percent. Restaurants, again, they're all, they're all outs, basically is half a mile to a mile. With the one outlier is fast food. Most people said don't allow it in Elkridge. So there you have it.
Mine's my wife, sorry.
How favorable are you to a property tax increase in order to fund the following? Additional recreation facilities. Thirty-five percent of the people were favorable, but the distribution is fairly scattered. So you get a kind of an even distribution from very unfavorable to very favorable, except for the category favorable went up quite a bit. A cemetery, same kind of thing, favorable. A civic center, that's quite favorable, actually. Forty-eight percent people said they'd be favorable to a property tax increase in order to fund a civic center.
What percentage, sorry?
And the library actually was forty-five percent favorable. In fact, it's the most favorable of all.
Speaking of that, our bookmobile is changing to Wednesdays in the summertime.
Do people even count it?
Yes, I'd love to count it back. I don't, but...
They come all day.
Earn the whole time they're here.
Like, it's busy.
And they've looked at expanding the amount of time they're here because of the amount of people that come and then the number of books that get checked out.
Okay, let's keep going.
So, sorry.
So of those that said that they were dissatisfied, and there's not a lot of them, with snow removal, how supportive would they be to a property tax to increase this? Most are either opposed or very opposed, so almost sixty percent.
We got McKay now, okay.
And that was other people that were...
Remember, most of the people are satisfied with the service.
What I was saying now.
And for roads, forty percent, forty-five percent are supportive or very supportive of increases in property taxes. Again, the count is small. We had a hundred and one, we had a hundred and one people answer that question though. Remember, a hundred and one out of, you know, three-hundred is pretty good, pretty good sampling. Law enforcement, they don't want any more law enforcement.
But the, the reason everybody's moving is neighbor problems.
Well, we know law enforcement can't solve those problems.
They can't solve those problems, though.
So why?
That's right. So how would you suggest the city balance the general budget given the choice between increased property taxes and actively pursuing commercial development? It's... It's uh, pretty skewed to the ends. Uh, most people are in favor of pursuing commercial development. Again, it's gotta go further away than a mile. But there are quite a few on the other side as well. Very few, relatively speaking, it's, it's, there's quite a bit in the middle, but generally speaking, it's skewed over to the. Then what about increasing property tax versus um, reducing service levels? It's pretty neutral. It's pretty neutral if you look at it. And what about reducing service levels versus um, commercial development? And again, most people are in favor of the commercial development. Funny, because they're, they're out to the ends, there's not a lot of, they're either neutral or out to the ends, so. What about the nuisance ordinances? About fifty percent of the people are familiar with it. Uh, two-hundred-and-sixty-two people answered that question. Are you aware of a current nuisance violation? And fifty percent of the people said no, and thirty-six percent said yes. And are you currently being affected by one? Half of our city says that they're affected by a nuisance violation.
Half?
Or, sorry, a quarter. And it's mostly dangerous conditions. I thought it would be otherwise. Noxious weeds, dangerous condition, debris, then animals, and then noise.
What, what would be a dangerous condition to nuisance?
I don't know, ask the residents.
If you stop cars?
That would be annoying.
If in a backyard you have a decrepit vehicle that little kids could crawl in, or if you have a, uh, some kind of equip, uh, refrigerator, old washing machine, just those kinds of things that are out there that could pose a hazard to little kids usually.
Is kind of what they're thinking.
Or open pits that guys have to cover for water repairs.
Yeah, they're down in Old Ford Canyon, they drilled a bunch of tin bars, didn't cap them twenty-five years ago, they're kind of hit miss. You may find one.
Deer nuisance needs to be added. It's a big problem and a lot of people complain about them.
Well, we lived in their area, so, still.
Just read one.
That's what I think.
Most people haven't attended a city council meeting.
A lot of people have not.
Forty-five percent. Most, half of the residents are not aware of the YouTube recording.
Thank goodness. Thank goodness.
No kidding.
We had um, we had five people want a dancing sign when we have a town council meeting.
The guest is awful.
People are just doing that to be a smarter, like, come on.
I was gonna say, who sent their email that they're gonna volunteer to the forever?
Email and text are way, way high in the choice. And then, then the website and the automated phone message are about half of that.
Okay, thank you.
Real quick summary, I'll put together an executive overview to give us some direction.
Update on city celebration, you wanna just give us a little bit of a?
An update of what's going on?
Yep, please.
Yeah, it's a hot mess. Um, I don't know, we're just starting to book stuff and figure out what we're doing. And getting sponsors and arrives graciously sponsored, a big amount to our city celebration. And then we're thinking about T-shirt designs. These are the nine designs I have for you to look at. Um, what, so, a lot of people, because I've asked, like, at least forty people now, what shirts they like the best. And it seems like this is the number one winner, where it says some big, some bigger, none better, and it has the, anyway, you guys can look at it and then tell me what you think too, I'm trying to take it all into account. But then there's a lot of people that don't run, so they don't want this shirt. But everyone that runs, which is most of my friends, they all want this shirt. So now we're thinking, maybe we should do two different shirts, and you could preorder them. What do you guys think? Would you ever buy a city shirt? I mean, honestly, would you?
I would.
You would?
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, I would.
Would you want a cheap T-shirt?
I'd probably get the one of the runners, because it looks pretty, uh, and I don't run more than, you know.
I think it'd have a cane on it.
Way back behind.
So we, we were the elk one year for our, for our team, and we all had little elk horns that we wore, that whole vehicle had like, anyway, that just makes me laugh. That's like a raggedy.
I mean, what do, what do you think? Like, okay, so for the runners, I'm doing, and I actually wore a T-shirt, because I would never normally wear a T-shirt, but these are the shirts that I'm gonna get for the runner, like, for the run. I, like, they'll look like this. I wanna, for women, not men, I will not make the men wear be necks. But I want it to be something that, that is flattering, come on. But something flattering that people will wear, because I think if it's something that you wear around, you know, like, these are my husband's orthodontic T-shirts, and his patients wear them. I mean, I see them everywhere, you know, because they're cute. So I'm like, okay, let's get a cute shirt to drum up business. Do you think people would be willing to pay a little bit more for a nice shirt on this, or, and I'm talking ten dollars or less. This would be like five if I do it cheap, and ten if I do it like this.
What does the one say? I can't even, like, that's what it says from, from back here?
It says Elk Ridge City Celebration, then it says some bigger, none better, and it has like, you know, the Statue of Liberty.
New York Land.
Yeah, all of the different things around the world saying, you know, some are bigger, but none are better. That was my concept, sort of. Anyway, I don't know. What do you think? Two shirts? No?
What is the one with the running, oh, the runners with the?
It's the same thing, it just says celebration, some bigger. And you had said about doing front and back, but the back will be all sponsors, because we, that's something we're gonna do for all of our sponsors. Their logos will be on there.
Well, I wasn't aware that there was sponsors, because I was thinking you were just gonna do it as a fundraiser. I didn't think about that part. So if you did one, it's just like a general.
Available to the public.
Available to the public, because there's people like me that'll never run, ever.
We go one mile.
No. Give me one mile hike and I'm all there. No one. But, um, no, I, I don't know, I, I think if you go with the cheaper, the first year if you're gonna sell them to the general public, you'll get more of them out, and then next year, you'll get number two, and you can raise the price a little bit more, and more people will want to buy them.
We were thinking pre-orders.
Or pre-orders. Well, yeah, no, but I'm saying even.
So I don't want this, I don't want the city stuck with shirts.
No.
So I was thinking we could send out a thing saying, if you have a shirt, go to this page, and you can preorder it from here.
Just a couple of thoughts, uh, of the ones that are up there, three of them are deer, not elk.
Alright, well, I didn't even know that.
And one of them's a Rudolph.
Well, yeah, I love that one. That's hilarious.
I would think we want an elk.
This is, is this an elk right here?
That one.
Okay, are these elk?
Those are elk.
Okay.
And the one next to it is.
And this guy is?
But the others, what's them coming in?
Except that's an elk.
Yeah, that's an elk.
Is that an elk? This is a deer?
Yes.
How do you know?
If you look at the antlers on the, on the deer, they curve in towards each other. On an elk, they flow backwards over the back of the.
They're more aerodynamic.
This is kind of where somebody who loathes hunting, so that's why I don't know any of this. Huh? It's, it's not a moral opposition, it's, I'm disgusted by it. Like, I do not want to do that.
So if you wanna have Elk Ridge bigger on any of the logos?
Do you think we need to make it bigger? I mean, we can do whatever we want to these. You tell me. I mean, my brother-in-law's like, tell me which ones you want, me, no, tweak whatever you want.
I think you could do the two, I think you could do one for the runners, and then you could have the, that, first, the, the left one. It needs to be bigger so that you're not squinting to see what it says.
Well, I mean, this isn't, this isn't to scale.
Let's take out the whole front.
Okay, oh, I didn't see this shirt outline.
Yeah, there's a shirt outline.
That'd be big. That'd be good.
It would be big. And we were thinking maybe white with like, dark, dark navy, but like, almost like BYU colors, and I hate to say that, because.
I know, it's tough.
It's familiar.
Easy.
I mean, I was thinking going, you, but, I didn't know. You like that one? Okay, so do both pre-orders?
Oh, I would think so.
Yeah, that's the fiscally responsible thing.
Yeah.
And like the run, we're trying to make it, like, the kids run maybe ten dollars, and for adults fifteen, and you get a shirt. So it's not gonna be a huge, you know what I mean?
It doesn't need to be a moneymaker for the city, it needs to be a.
Yeah, just cover costs.
A participation.
Yes.
Uh, on the carnival things, have, have you, uh, have you checked out, uh?
Yes, we've, we've gone and seen them, and then I've, yeah, we've, we have all our games figured out and prizes and everything like that, so.
Trish, you have like a family prize too and stuff for the run? Because I know you'll get, if you have like a family prize, you'll often.
We can, we're gonna try to do a ton of prizes, like bid number prizes, so that, because for me, like, I'm slow, I'll never win anything. So, I would, I'll win if they draw my bid number, you know what I mean? So we'll have a lot of that.
All right, and I just have one, one quick question here. I was asked by the fire department to follow up and make sure that you're still planning on them.
Cotton candy dump tape?
Having the cotton candy and the dump tape, um, kettle corn.
Kettle corn.
Yeah, we're doing all that together.
Yes.
All right. It'll be fun to see one of those carnival games, too.
Proposed landscaping code amendment. Questions, comments, concerns?
Wait, is this in the?
Yes, it's in the first session. It's number six.
I'll, I'll make it simple. I'm opposed, I won't vote for it in any form.
Oh, Nelson tells me good.
I'm in favor of it.
You're being ordered right now. No, it's all right. That's why I kept it simple.
But why? Like?
Why?
I, I wanna hear.
Okay. The memo from Shay. That's just the tip of the iceberg. That's unintended consequence number one. You've got all these homes that are in the process of coming through, they've already gone out and they've got their loans, based on the construction cost of that property. And now you're gonna be, oh, it'll be the contractor comm saying, oh, by the way, you gotta come up with another five grand. So do you not want the jetted tub, the walkout basement, the deck on the back? Which option do you wanna take off the table?
You got bottom line. That isn't, uh, that isn't.
No, but it can't, no. Okay, so that's, that's number one. Number two? There, our city has areas where you have had in the past either PUDs or uh CCNRs, specifically for the people when they move in, because that's what they wanna move into. The rest of us moved into a city where we didn't have the government coming in and putting their thumb down and telling us who, what, where, when, and how we're gonna live our lives. I read this and it's like doggone it, you know, if I wanted to be micromanaged to that level, I would go live in an HOA. And, point number three. And this has been cited, and I have yet to see any hard figures here. I, I feel like we're trying to solve a problem that's not even really a problem. Because we already have an ordinance in place that deals with a timely manner for people to get their yards in. And now we're going in and we're gonna make it even more restrictive, and we're gonna say, you gotta have it in before, you gotta have an engineering plan, you gotta have all these other things. And I just, I, I just don't see that that's the proper role of government. Our job is to provide for the safety, health, and welfare of our residents. I have talked with probably more residents about this code than everything else that has gone on in the last year and a half. And that includes a property tax increase and a sewer rate increase. I have yet to talk to anybody other than a few that are here on the council that are for this as it is written, in its entirety.
These are the existing residents?
These are existing residents and people that are looking at coming to our community. In fact, there was one point in time, about a week ago, I actually had people in my office and out in the waiting area, waiting to talk to me. I've never had that happen before, just specifically about this. And I, the PUD has within it already, within our code, it addresses the trees, which is kind of one of the big things, we gotta have trees. I, it's like we're trying to take the PUD code and just blow it up over the whole entire city, and I just, I can't even stomach it. I can't, and I walked.
Okay.
So.
Somebody else.
Can we hear from Dale? Why do you answer? Like, I wanna hear both sides, do you know what I'm saying?
That's why I do.
Yeah, of course, we, we wanna hear from whoever has.
Actually, you're, uh, the, uh, the code that we have in place that you think is great and, uh, and works well, uh, says what?
It says you have two years.
About two years to do what? And, and if you don't, uh, what? Uh, one of the biggest complaints, uh, in the city is people not, you know, people who want to take care of their yards, and they put them in, uh, when they, uh, when they start, and the next neighbor, uh, doesn't care. And I could go two years, three years, five years. Nobody is enforcing that code at all. That's why it was put in. And the only logical way that you would get any compliance out of it is uh occupancy. They'll do it before they occupy. Actually, most of this city that, uh, that is being developed is in, in a hayfield. There's nothing there. There's no trees, there's no, uh, there's no grass, hayfield and weeds. The, uh, uh, all of, all of this that you didn't have, uh, have curb and gutter and sidewalk. Uh, when you have curb and gutter and sidewalk, actually, in my opinion, the, uh, the nicest development in Elk Ridge is the one that's Salisbury, yeah, finished up, uh, development. Has all the trees in, sidewalks, front yards. Uh, and most of the, uh, most of them, uh, of the, the people that live there are the flats that they had, the front yards in, when they, uh, when they moved in. There are, these, the, the requirement is very minimal. You have, have to have a lawn in, a sprinkler system, and two trees. What is wrong with that? Most, all of these are small lots. You know, it isn't like you have, you have an acre, or you have five acres, doesn't matter what the neighbor does. But, in my opinion, uh, this is, uh, most people also, I think it's a real disservice to, to not, uh, give them that option of putting in the front, uh, the front lawn, uh, and being able to pay for it over thirty years, instead of trying to come up with four or five thousand dollars, uh, uh, soon after. You talk to the housewives and see how many of those would like to have a piece of lawn in, uh, instead of track and dirt in, to start with. That sprinkler system gives you everything, everything in place where it's easy to finish up the backyards. The, uh, the backyards are primarily where the expense, uh, is developed. That's where you have the patios, the rock walls, the waterfalls, the, uh, the features are usually in the backyard. You drive around, uh, around the city, and it does make a difference in the look of the city. If you do, if you do a whole development and nobody puts any, any trees in, it'll look, it'll, it has a deteriorated look, uh, the longer that it, that it goes. In my opinion, and this does not require, you know, I saw a couple of them saying, it requires that you have a certified, uh, landscaper, uh, draw up the plan. It doesn't for residential. It does for commercial, uh, like, oh, the.
It requires a plan, but you can actually draw it on a piece of paper and set it to building.
Yeah, yeah. And, uh, and that is very, very minimal. A sprinkler system, lawn, and two trees. Uh, and actually, I would bet, uh, that most people, uh, even those that have it already, if you gave them that option of funding it, uh, unless they're just strapped and right at the, at the border. But they will not, uh.
And one thing to come up with that. And the only thing I'd like to add in is that, you know, if we don't, if we, if we put in the landscape requirement that you can have two years after you move in to do it, then we gotta send out the landscape cops. I'm tired of having cops to do stupid things like this. So if you do it up front, and we say, just like Salem does, or any others that, that do this, put your lawn in and couple of trees, and then we don't have to be cops anymore. If you wanna dig a hole in the middle and put a thing in there, or whatever you wanna do, that's fine. Later, but we can't be cops. We cannot send out cops for two years saying, you better have this done, you, you're gonna, well, I don't know what we're gonna do. Because we don't know what we're gonna do. We never do anything.
We never do anything.
So we either strike the whole thing.
That's the complaint of a lot of people.
Or we gotta put a, get ahead of this and get out of the cop business. We just can't do the cop business. That's my personal take. Cop business and. Cop business and, and draw a plan. I drew a plan when I stepped into my garage. It wasn't tough. I drew a thing that said, here's my, where my rain gutter are gonna go, here's where I'm gonna put a tree and a shrub. And that was good and the rest is long.
Brittany?
Okay, so the whole reason this came about is our code enforcement of the two years. And Boyd, who's our code enforcement officer, I worked with him for a long time, he has a huge file about this big. And it is filled with landscaping complaints. And he spends a lot of time going and visiting and encouraging and trying to get these residents to put in their yards because they didn't do it within the two years. And the neighbors aren't happy because they put theirs in and they expected their neighbor to put theirs in. So this is, this code would only apply to new houses. And the Shay's thing about, well, people are under contract, like if they budgeted and if they're at the max of their budget and they can't afford a penny more. How are they gonna come up with five thousand dollars to put in their yard? And that's the problem that we're having is people are, they buy to the very most, they go to the bank, they don't write out their budget and say, how much can I afford to spend on a house every month? Because I'm aware I'm spending. They go to the bank and say, this is how much I make, how much will you give me? And then the bank says, I'll give you X amount of dollars. And they say, great. And then they go find a house, the cost X amount of dollars. And then they buy it. And then it's like, oh, now we got paid this bill and we still have our medical expenses and our car and pay for the kids and the utilities, right? And then they're maxed out. And so. I think this would solve our enforcement problem. And Boyd could actually work on other things like dangerous conditions that people are concerned about.
Like chickens.
You know what I mean? Like we could get him working on other things instead of allowing this to go on and on, right? If we have a huge complaint and we can see this is a big complaint in our city, what are we as a council going to do about it? And I, I think this is a way to solve that.
Yeah, I agree.
Another point I was, I wanted to make though, is that already, you know, children, you'll self-help homes. Those are some of those that are living close, closest to the budget. Uh, uh, puts in the, uh, front yard, the sprinkler system, lawn, and a couple of trees. The Salisbury, uh, puts, he does the, uh, the front, the front yard, the front lawn, the sprinkler system, and the, uh, and the trees. Uh, uh, the, uh, the new code, you know, they put in, uh, all the, uh, all the amenities, uh, with it. You know, on their, uh, on their own there. And I think it is a disservice to, to the, to give them the option. I doubt that it's really even discussed with the individuals buying a home. That, uh, to pay for it, uh, fifteen, twenty dollars a month, uh, for their loan rather than try to come up with a, with a loan. Uh, you know, for most people, it's hard for them to come up. I think it will solve.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Um, how many cities do this? Like how common is it for the occup- to be given an occupancy? Are we like, anyone? Do you know some of?
How common is it for it to be required? I haven't read what you're proposing. It's becoming more and more common.
It is.
For front lawns, front lawns.
Front, I'm just saying front.
It's common with, with PUDs, obviously. It's common a lot when you, when you're dealing with smaller stuff a little bit. Um, that, that's very common in, in those type of things. You're in a master planning committee, a lot of times you even have an HOA with it. They have CCNRs attached to it. Um, cities are moving a little bit more towards it, but they seem to be moving more towards a deposit. Because here's what happens, the unintended consequences are, we are in a hillside sloped community. Uh, we have bigger lots here and everybody's idea of it is a little bit different. And so a homeowner that we, maybe we would sell to, it doesn't affect quite as much on the really smaller stuff like that's not. What, what I worry about is when I, as I get to my bigger, you know, half acres and third acre lots and it's on hillsides. And you go down, if you drive those neighborhoods, some have built like right backs to the state center, they have a courtyard they put out in front. I mean, they put it within a year. You can't put that in, you're, you're in such a timeframe at the end of. Um, you know, basically your concrete, your exterior is done and people are, their interior is done, they're ready to move in. And if they're gonna do some extravagant landscaping, that takes time. I mean, there's a guy working on one down there, he probably has on the corner, on Chris's lane going down. Started to go down the hill. I bet he has fifty thousand on retaining walls. He's got all the, he's not done yet, he just put his fence in almost. He's got a sprinklers in now. He just moved in maybe three or four months ago. He's just trying, that's what they want. They wanna, they want something more extravagant. I, if I were to do those, I mean, I, all I could throw in is simple grass and, you know what I mean, as far as that's what you're gonna get. Everything is gonna look the same, two trees, the same eight shrubs. And it's, you're gonna lose that community. And if you drive, you talked about that down there, I drove, so I drove a lot of neighborhoods today and I don't know, I've got pictures here to. To kinda show you what I'm talking about. If you go up this road that goes up past Kyle Houghton's house and each one of those homes, they'll ha- they're so different. But I think that's what makes it so neat. They'll have, they put little retaining walls, they some have, you know, gravel out in the front, you know. Um, I've got some that are zero scape. I've got one in, um, down here in Elk Ridge Meadows that's got a, they've got a fountain, you know, they've got a little pond thing in the front. You're not gonna, all they're gonna do is have to tear all that out, that would've wasted that money. Why not? Spanish Fork handles it, um, with a, and a lot of the other cities handle it with just a deposit. If you call it a deposit rather than a bond, the, the bond, I think, I'm not totally sure on this, you guys could look at it a little deeper. A bond means you're gonna foreclose the bond and you're gonna go enter the property and, you know, it's really hard to, to manage bonds, right? A deposit, they could, they'll lose it. So there's a motivation, like I only have this money this one year or whatever that is, to get it in and do what I want. And I, what I, you know, and I, for me, I look at it from, I'm trying to look at it from all sides, right? Um, you know, we had a house in our neighborhood that, uh, they had probably fourteen years of, and, and we had work projects that we'd get a part, they changed or not, it was a weird deal. I'm telling you, it was the weirdest. And that was probably half that file, um, just this one house, right? We tried to be helpful and, and I get all that. I mean, I get that, that's an issue. But I also think that if you look at, everybody's different and most people is not a matter of, I'm here. You know, they, they just wanna do it themselves. I mean, I watch families out there with their little kids, they're doing their own trenching and, you know, they're, they're putting it themselves. They're typically getting in the right timeframe. The extra motivation would be to have that deposit. It's very easy, you know, to, to manage, it's here, as soon as you're done with it, well, you know, you can collect that money. Or if you don't have it in a time period, you'll lose it. You know, it goes to the city. Um, that typically is, allows a broad thing of what I think we've been all about here in Elk Ridge. I mean, look at our own, if you take all of our own yards, what we did with them, could you really do that? The, the men, I mean, if you had a week when you finished your house and, you know, that, that you could actually enter that with the front yard landscaping. And is that really what you wanted? And that's not what I wanted when I moved into my, either one of my houses. I put some retaining walls and I went a little above and beyond. And that's really hard to do and time all that just in that short period of time. And these people are moving from another house. They wanna get into their new house. It's not typically they can't afford it, they just wanna get in and then you, you probably haven't yet to see. You don't even, I can't, you say, uh, a landscape plan, you could do one that's simple, I guess, but it changes. Cause I don't even know where its steps and foundations are until we start digging the hole and that, that grade starts. And that's where retaining walls tie in. And I don't know the elevation of the stairs and the interior of concrete. And it's really hard to design that until all that's in, that you can say, okay, this'll be a good place for the plan. Cause I don't know how many steps are gonna be here on this landing, that landing, to get up on these hillside communities.
Well, the reason why, reason why I, I look at this a little bit, I guess, differently in a way is because. Reason why I didn't, that I said, you don't have to have a landscape architect do this. Is because we just wanted to know that you've given thought to the fact that you're gonna put landscaping in it.
Right.
Right?
Now, if you're. If you have a deposit, if you have a deposit sitting in the city, there's obviously a thought.
See why?
Well, so the deposit, it always comes back to, great, so they, we keep their money and then they have the law, lawn that's not gonna be in for five years.
No, they lose it if they don't do it within a second.
Yeah, we keep the money, they don't have a lawn.
Then we have money to pay to go code enforcement.
Then we start back up the code police.
Okay, but my, my, my only problem with, with what Dean's saying, but I look at it different like. I'm with Nelson on this one fe- I mean, like, I don't like the government telling me, so now does my landscaper have to be my builder? I don't get to choose who does my landscaping? Do you know what I'm saying? That's only, that's my beef, like, what if I wanna have my so-and-so that does landscaping do it? You know what I mean? That's, that's why I'm like, maybe we should.
That's not hanging up on the.
Maybe we should have a window for those who want to, those who want to do it, like he's saying, that wanna do more.
Okay, I see.
Maybe we should have like written in there, if you would like longer, then you can come and, or whatever. From the city, you give the money over.
I'm mature, I mean, I'll, I'll put it in or a bond for it. It's making up for any, the bond for it, I really do apologize.
And you have six months to do it.
You can, you can put this in, I've got this, or you give, uh.
Exactly.
An amount of money, but sufficient that people are gonna put it in, seven thousand dollars. I mean, something, some big numbers.
I don't mind giving the options.
That's what I'm trying to say.
The options for some people, seven thousand dollars would put them out of a house.
Well, it doesn't have to be that, we could do it based on house.
But I'm saying, but that's what I'm saying.
You gotta be a little careful that.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't mind a little bit.
Five thousand or something, but what I'm saying is you do a thousand, people are gonna, well, it costs me more than a thousand.
By the way, I'm not right, I've read it now, obviously.
Do one as a time, please, one time, please. Dale?
Actually, actually, when you look at what's being developed here and then in Europe, there's ninety-two lots that are, are the smaller lots. And, uh, of the seventeen that were initially, uh, initially put in, this is probably going on their second year. Uh, just driving around, I think that about one-third haven't put it in, uh, lawn yet, uh, two-thirds have. Uh, uh, very few trees are going in, uh, Haskell subdivision, there's, uh, there's two or three of them that have put in lawns. But, uh, no trees, one guy has put in, uh, trees. But it just, uh, you know, it, I, what is your proposal then? What are you, uh, what is your, what would be your rule if you were making it?
Is that? I don't mind if you have, the, the part of it that says you, you know, asking for trees and, you know, that doesn't, it's just the, the, the coordination of.
There's the timing issue.
The timing issue of, of, of a buyer that, and it may be a buyer that wants to put it in themselves. I mean, that, that may be that extra cost, that they may be a little bit tight. Well, they're, they may be, I mean, to go buy the parts to do sprink- I mean, the, the bid that those guys had got here to do their thing was a lot different than the bid that I got, wasn't it? For the two acre park, I mean, that was, mine was a lot more. But, you know, they're, they're looking at budgeting, right? You can find that, you can go buy your own sprinkler, right, and put your thing in and stay a lot lower cost. At least that gives them an opportunity to, to work on themselves. Maybe they can do a lot more if they get to do that. They can do a lot more extravagant. You know, if there's a deposit sitting there.
Put it in the backyard.
Like hire somebody or do more and do it yourself. At least it gives, at least you get a community, right? I mean, this is about a community thing of, just think about it. You have, you know, you're not addressing it to current people, right? And, and try to pass that, right? That you guys are all doing, you, everybody that doesn't have curb and gutter and sidewalk needs to have that in this next year. That, that's that thing of, you know, that unrealistic kinda, you know, just forcing somebody to do something. Give them a little bit of flexibility at least, I mean, that's the minimum.
How much, how much did, did you, do you see it costing for most homes? Like if you're just gonna do it?
It honestly depends. I mean, so, yeah, it depends on lot size, it depends on what they're doing, you know, if it's, if it's grass and a couple of trees and, and they're going minimally.
Well, that's what I'm saying, the minimum. So what if you were like?
I mean, it's, so in Salem, the deposit is three thousand if you don't do it, but I, if I do, I'm typically about thirty-five hundred. You know, the, to, to four thousand on a lot of those. Um, but it's gonna depend on, and those are like quarter acre lots. Um, deposit in Spanish Fork, they do it a little bit differently. I don't, I don't, I mean, I, the way they do it works for me, but probably it's not what you guys are looking for. They do twenty-five hundred, they get one year for the front yard, two years for the backyard, and you, you forfeit that for four years. They're just trying to say, okay, let people have that option. And they try, they wanna actually try to get backyards tied to it too. I don't suggest that necessarily.
So that would be rolled into their loan though as well, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, somebody's gotta, you gotta provide that upfront and it's part of your building permitting costs.
So couldn't you offer that, like, it saves this one in, could you offer that and say, we're willing to put in your sprinkler and the grass and the minimal, you know, the trees?
They can choose.
Or you can choose to do this if you go do.
Or I can give them the deposit, the city, you'll collect the deposit at the beginning. At the building permit time. I'll either get that deposit back by putting their thing in, or I'll let them do it on their own. And that will automatically, as soon as the property changes hands, that deposit follows whoever owns the home.
So if they knew they had thirty-five hundred dollars, I mean, would they do their yard?
Both would.
I, I, my front yard is probably would. A question or two that have come to my mind now. When, when you with self-help homes moved into those homes, how long after a home was finished? Did you have to wait for everybody else to get their yards in? Because you couldn't move in, that was the standard and, and I, I think it's a good idea in that particular, and everybody comes in knowing upfront, that's what has to happen. But some of the homes would be finished, but you have to still wait for others to get their yards in and you're sitting there and you're waiting and waiting. The other question I have, how much construction debris falls on a yard? Everything else is done. I, I know you're cleaning up as you go, cause you have to, that's part of code two. But you finally get everything that's up and now you can, can get the construction debris off of your lawn, then you can start putting in the lawn. And now you're still stuck putting that in depending on the time of the year before you can occupy the home.
I have a week about, honestly, when, when everything's kinda in, I can get a final grade and see what I've gotten, you know, and that's, to do basic stuff, I mean, that, I mean, it. Sometimes it's a little challenging, cause if you have four or five hit, you're, I mean, your landscaper's going crazy, right? If it's attached to moving in and they, at, at least I could go down, mo- al- most all cities, I could go down and just do the deposit. Even if, even if I'm doing it, I can still get them in their home, they're, they're not gonna lose their lock on their loan. At least then, then I can collect that money back after I put it in.
Sure.
But sometimes that's even a timing issue that I can't put that many in, you know, for, you know, sometimes we'll close twenty homes in, in a, in a month. You know, that's, that's a lot of landscaping to do if for, by chance they hit a lot of places that are landscaped.
Dale, are you okay with that? Like would you, do you think that's fair if we gave them?
Right, you're gonna bond anyways, deposit in the winter anyway.
Or do you not like that? I mean, I'm just asking, like, do you think we should put a pause or something if they choose to?
I think that they would probably put that in if they, if they are, if they're required to.
And there's money waiting for them.
Uh, yeah, the money's there. They, they're doing the same thing. They're putting it into the loan. They're paying for it a little bit on a month, uh, a little bit a month over the, the period of, uh.
They're paying, they don't have it, they think they want it.
They don't have to come up with, with, uh, three or four thousand dollars, uh, all at once.
Does anybody, I mean, it's really, that city gonna hold mine? I mean, that's, that's a little worse than your mom holding it, fuck you, right? That big city, who's talking about they want to build.
Well, somebody's gotta hold some money here.
You know what, the thing is, you're gonna have people that just want. You're gonna have the people that just want the very basic done and you're gonna have people that want to do their own. And they're gonna wanna put in extravagant stuff. And the people that are gonna wanna put in extravagant stuff, they're gonna be spending lots of money on their yard anyways.
A lot more than what this is for sure.
A lot more than, yes. And so having a decent sized deposit, I don't, you know what I mean?
Just not motivation, I.
And, and the thing is, they will get it back. So it's like, if we do it and we get it, then they just get the money back and they can.
For your date.
Yeah, yes, of course. But I think it has to.
Most likely, right? What's gonna happen? I mean, nobody's gonna really wanna, I mean, we're a community, I don't know about your neighborhoods, but. I mean, if I saw somebody that's gonna lose their money, I mean, I think we'd probably give them a little more time. I think the neighbors would help them out, you know?
No, we don't give it back.
Yeah.
Snitch and lose, right?
You get it.
Goes into our offshore banking account.
There you go. I'm gonna have somebody down there, I don't know if he's the one guy, you know, he's probably gonna take a little longer, um, despite what he's doing, but he's, he's welding his. A fence and then he, and he did the, and then he's doing that. That's his, I mean, that's kinda what he wants to do, right?
To collect it.
Yeah.
But I do, I do wanna say one thing, like I guess. I know you don't wanna write the code in because you believe more self-governing, less government telling me what to do and I, and I understand that. But when people can't self-govern and then it starts taking more resources from the taxpayers, like we're paying code enforcement and all of that. Like I see why there's a need for it.
But we wouldn't have the code enforcement if we didn't have the code in place in the first place.
Well, we need to have a code just to coexist as neighbors.
Well, I, I, I think that there's a certain level that needs to be there. However, if you look back at when that code was written and the impetus behind it. It was specifically done to address a few people who were specific neighbors to people who were in a position and quite frankly, use their position to get a desired outcome. And that's my rub.
Okay.
I mean, it's.
See, but to me, I like the code and I don't have any fears that are.
I mean, I, you know, I don't even remember how long it took me to put my yard in.
But I, but I don't like that we were worried about the money issue because you don't, in my opinion, you don't write codes. To make sure people can afford. If you can't afford to move here and you can't afford to follow our codes, then, then you need to live somewhere else. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, I don't like that being what would make, help make my decision or not, like, well, they can't afford the thirty-five hundred, so. Like, I don't like that being what would help make my decision or not, like, well, they can't afford the thirty-five hundred, so, well, then they probably need to live somewhere else.
I think the choice, the money isn't my issue with that. My issue is.
That was number four.
And I'm gonna go back to Dale Bigler's campaign flyer. He said, the government that governs the best is the government that governs the least.
As long as they're self-governing, but.
But I just, I, you know, to put this in the code, it's gonna cost us half of what we pay our code enforcement officer just to get a codified.
But then, it's like Brittany said, in the long run, though.
How about where it could pass, we already made. There is an impact on your neighbor here, if you don't do your lawn, and you get the dust all the time, and the dogs running in, and.
The weeds blowing in. What percentage of people can play that when you're, no, I'm serious.
Twenty-five percent of them, I think.
Like, maybe this would help with some of that.
Well, and I'm not saying it's not gonna help, I just don't like the way that it's being strong on there.
And I can respect that, I can respect that, definitely.
You know, my vote aside, I'm pretty sure you're gonna pass some iteration of this language, but I just wanna be, this is where I draw my line.
I respect you, yeah, for saying that.
Okay, next.
Sorry.
Budget.
So Dale, are you gonna rework this?
No.
This is the final one.
We've done, we've since worked it, actually, all the.
Because the budget is gonna take us a long time. I know that there are some individuals here who would like to address the city relative to the public forum, and they are relative to our landscaping. I just, I mean, has already jumped into public forum.
That wasn't the first.
Not only did he throw you under the bus, but he built the bus.
I will take a moment and take any other comments from the public generally.
Do we want to?
Relative to this particular topic.
To the landscaping code? Are we going, just so I can clarify, are we going to our regular council meeting and just skipping the budget work session for now? Or are we just going to public comment, then back to the?
Back to the budget, yes. We're gonna come back to the budget, because we, the landscaping code, the budget, they're action items, we need to come back to. Yeah, we'll definitely come back. So, on that basis, anyone else want to address the council relative to the landscape code?
Yeah, I like the idea of the option. You know, the way it currently is, it does feel like it's being just forced now. Given a new home buyer the option to either put that deposit and/or just put the inexpensive landscaping in, just seems to make sense. When you vote, just, maybe you can just amend the amendment to have an option.
A super, when we voted on this, that it was, the stipulation was that those that were already under contract wouldn't be held to this until, it began with those that haven't signed contracts, and it wouldn't cause a problem with those beginning homes.
That's correct.
Can I speak in public room?
Yeah.
I can have something as a resident. Okay, I strongly oppose having the government, like Nelson, tell you how to do your yard. What if I decide that I want to zero scape, but the code requires me to install a sprinkler system? That's a cost to me that's not even gonna be used, and the state's gonna come in and mandate that we conserve water? What about our water rate issue we have right now? How can we tell people, you have to put grass in, you can't zero scape, you have to put grass in, but your water's gonna cost you a fortune. And you have to water it, and you have to maintain it. Part of, you can be required to put your yard in, but the whole point is if you maintain that yard. You know, there's some homes that have gotten yards put in, but they're not maintaining it, so it's gonna get back to the same problem. And Boyd's files that he has that you referred to, Brittany, ninety percent of them are files of the older part of town. The newer part of town is not the problem. Most new homes do want to put, put a yard in.
You can do both scapeing, just.
Well, but you have to put in a sprinkler system, that's part of the code amendment. If you read it, it's in there, that you have to put it in your front yard.
In zero scape.
Sorry, my turn. So, I've taught with several residents, several residents, not one has been supportive. It's too intermingling, and even with me, it took me a while to get my yard in. It didn't take me quite two years, but it's a finance thing. You know, you have to save yearly to be able to put this kind of stuff in. Whether or not I choose to live in Elk Ridge, or Benjamin, wherever, I wanna do what I wanna do in my front yard. Oh, sorry, one more thing, sorry. If I wanna water with a hose, I can do just as good a job with the hose as I can a sprinkler system. 'Cause how many times you drive by, you see someone's sprinklers going on in the middle of the night, flooding the street? So a hose could conserve more, and if I wanna water with a hose, I should be able to water with a hose, not sprinklers.
It's really interesting to me, because this just came in the mail where my son was scanning pictures in. Let me remind the few of you who know what my house was like when I moved in to Elk Ridge. Okay, so now I hear people, I hear people talking about, well, if they can afford it, maybe they should move someplace else. And every time I hear that, I hear that you don't want people like the Danes, don't you like us, Dale?
Sure, yeah.
Are you glad we moved into Elk Ridge?
Sure.
Okay, but we wouldn't have had Elk Ridge had the attitude that is represented in that landscaping code. I wrote up some thoughts today, but here's the problem. I wanna give them to you, and I don't wanna give them to you, because I know that they're going to be read wrong. One of the problems that I personally have is that when I think of things, I start thinking almost in a meta level. What's the principle involved here? Where is the right and wrong? I love each and every one of you, and I think you're all good people. So when I get into this stuff, it's not because I think anyone here is being malicious, but I have said some things in a very pointed way, because I think maybe you haven't done the self-reflection on what is occurring. We have a country here, lawns were not the thing when our country was founded. This is worse than the tea tax, when you think about it. This is more government control than why they threw that tea over the ship in Boston. And so, I know that some of this is gonna be taken out. This is not written, because I think you're bad people. I'm talking about ideas, not personalities and individual people. And I know if this, when this leaves this room, some people are gonna say she's crazy. But I'm gonna risk it, because these.
You wrote it, you really did.
I wrote it, and I do believe everything in here, but it's looking at things in a different way than you're looking at it. I remember the campaign brochure that was written, that was built on our computer, and we helped design, that said, government that governs least is that which governs best. And the only reason, when my friends asked me, why, but he wants to go control our lawns and stuff? No, he likes things to be beautiful, but he assures us that we do it ourselves, and maybe we work together, or we help neighbors, but we don't do it by forcing them. That was the discussion. Okay? So, you have here, when you ask someone to put something on their loan, you are violating in some ways a principle that we have been taught, I wrote about this in here. We are all Latter Day Saints. We are not supposed to, not all of, maybe everybody in the room isn't.
Maybe we're not active.
You may not be active, okay, maybe you're not active, but at least that means others who are. You understand what I'm saying? We have been told not to go in debt except for necessities. The clothes my house wears is not a necessity. Do you realize there's an anti-lawn movement out there? I have, you know, when these things came up one time before, I looked, there are people who are fighting against any lawn. The lawn is a tradition that has arisen, and now people are persecuted because they don't do it. Lawns grow, they evolve. If we had been forced to put a sprinkler system and had a lawn in, we probably wouldn't have the fine brick work at the front of our house now. That was sort of came as time went on, after we added on to the line shack, you know? So, when I moved to Elk Ridge, the most wonderful thing about it was its people. You had, you had people who were doctors, professors, teachers, everything, and everybody was the same. And they were equal, and you never felt looked down on because your yard wasn't as pretty, or you weren't as rich. One time, we had twenty-five percent people were M.D.s or P.H.D.s, but everybody was the same in our ward. That many people, so we were very educated, but we weren't treated like we were wrong. We were told, you can't fix up that yard base, maybe you should go someplace where you can afford to do it. So we get an attitude, when you get a little power, a little legislative feeling here, you start saying, well, what are other people doing? It doesn't matter how many people are smoking, drinking, or immoral, that doesn't mean you should do it. It's not what other people do. Can't we kind of come back to being a community that says, what is the principle here? Maybe I don't like my neighbor's yard, but can you look at who your neighbor is and love your neighbor? That's what's important. If you want people to flock to Elk Ridge, then make it where you're not fighting against neighbors and trying to make it all the biggest house, or fancy, and look like some exclusive neighborhood. If you truly loved your neighbor, and you let people live their lives, pretty soon, board would get out. And good people would move here, and the people who have problems would feel more supported, and they would be able to come up. Some of them would start to put in their lawns. But I'll tell you, when all this stuff came up about lawns, I decided to plant, that I wanna plant dandelions, 'cause I think they're pretty and they're edible. I used to worry about Maya, she's gonna cry.
No, I'm just thinking, no.
What I'm saying is, this becomes divisive. You're saying what is okay. When I came to Elk Ridge, there weren't hardly any trees, didn't I? People plant trees over time. Those homes have only been there a few years. I drive up into Elk Ridge, and it's beautiful. We don't, we don't have a beauty problem. It doesn't have to be lined up, planted, oh, yeah, somebody said planted all the same, so, okay.
Okay, we're gonna take a one-minute break and give it.